I'd like to call this regularly scheduled Moll Mel Planning Commission meeting to order. Mr. Neri, will you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two. Obviously Chairman Fisher is not going to be with us this evening. I think all of you all probably received my email. He has some physical difficulties, and I'm sure we all wish Mike a speedy recovery. Hence Vice Chairman Todd is back in his old chair. Also, there's been a deferment, and I think you all also got this from me. Destiny the Kingdom's Ministries came in today and formally accepted a new conditional use permit application to ironically move to 701 Murphy, which is where the Church of the Christian Ministries in July moved from over to Moll Mel Corners. So we will see them again in October with a new conditional use permit request. And that concludes my announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any Commissioners have announcements? First item is the approval of the minutes from the August 25th meeting. All Commissioners have a copy. Are there any changes?
Motion to approve the minutes. Depending on any further comment, depending on any other Commissioner comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 25th meeting as submitted. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed say no. I have no public comment cards. I'd like to open the public hearing. No old business, new business with that. I'd like to convene the Board of Zoning and Adjustments. Mr. Neri got a request for variance regarding Section 94-166.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is correct, and that is by Moll Mel Ridge 223 LLC. Specifically, this involves a smaller lot subdivision, a development of its type. It's never really been tried in Moll Mel before. In this case, in this section of code, it is stated that no more than forty percent of the lot can be covered by the principal and accessory buildings. The applicant proposes to cover forty-five percent in total of those lots. That is the request that is before you.
Thank you. Any Commissioners have questions of staff? Is there a representative for the developer?
Good evening. I'm Brian Dale with White Daters and Associates. I am here on behalf of the applicant to represent the request this evening.
Can you kind of go over this? We went through it with Subcommittee, but not everybody was there.
Yes. They are proposing a... They're proposing a garden patio home development. The market that they are trying to reach out to is smaller homes that have no yards, basically. They would enjoy all the green space and the open space around it, but they would not really have any yards. That's why they're proposing smaller lots and trying to get a larger structure approved on. It would be a little bit different market than the Ridgeview Trails. This market in Little Rock has had a lot of success with three different developments: the Taylor Park subdivision on Canis Road, the Bishop Place subdivision up on Highway 10, and the gardens at Valley Falls on Lamar Street. All three of those developments were very similar to this one, where they were large, not larger homes, but I mean they were patio homes that for the most part take up half the lot. They're asking to be allowed to increase to forty-five percent. That would allow them to build about a nineteen-hundred square foot heated and cooled home, including a four-hundred square foot garage and a hundred square feet for a patio. If it was at forty percent, as the code states, they would be allowed to build about a sixteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot home roughly, approximately, and then a two-car garage at four-hundred square feet and a hundred square foot patio.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dale, don't we mean seventeen-hundred-and-fifty square foot home at forty-five percent?
At forty-five percent, it would actually be nineteen-ten.
Okay.
Heated and cooled, with the assumption of five-hundred square feet for a garage and a patio, a covered patio.
And that's for a larger lot-type home, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the figure I heard was seventeen-hundred-and-fifty at forty-five percent. First I've heard of nineteen-hundred.
Do my math again, but I think fifty-three, fifty-five times forty-five percent is twenty-four-ten minus five-hundred square feet. Would the max that they could build would be about nineteen-ten. They're trying to compare or do a product very similar to the New Bedford, which is about seventeen-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The New Bedford has found a price point that is really selling over there, which is seventeen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, that's selling for about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and they're moving them pretty fast over there. They're not even really staying on the market. As soon as they finish them, they're selling them. So that's probably the number that we spoke about, and I think they would probably try targeting it because it's moving here in Moll Mel.
Okay. Any Commissioner have questions?
A couple. Is there... I know we spoke on the phone earlier today, Mr. Dale, but the question that I have, I guess on the benefit of the Commission, and I want to ask it here, is that what is preventing your client or limiting your client to propose a plat that is compliant all with R1 as it is currently zoned?
We could do the forty percent, build smaller homes, and they could comply with R1. They're wanting to build a larger home that they feel will fit the market. The other thing that they could do, that I don't think they want to do, is they could do a larger lot to get to that larger home size, but then they're creating more yard, which is not really what they're wanting to do. They're wanting to keep the yards smaller for the garden development.
Mr. Neri, what other zoning vehicle is available to the applicant to achieve this size lot with the proposed residence with nineteen-hundred-and-ten square feet?
For the most part, Planned Residential District, PRD.
Did you discuss that option with your client?
Yes.
And their position of moving forward with R1 and the variance rather than going forward with something that wouldn't be appropriately zoned was, what was their reason?
Shorter timeframe. A shorter timeframe. The timeframe for a PRD would take us through the end of November after it got through the Board, and with this route, if approved this evening, we would be done.
Is the... Well, I mean, I'm sure you discussed if the variance didn't go through, what would their intent be?
We would either be coming back with the PRD, or they would accept the forty percent reduction, or not reduction, but the forty percent rule.
And you shared with me that forty percent rule is around sixteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, give or take?
Correct.
Before the meeting, you shared that with me? So there's not a burden that we're placing on the client here, or your client, other than time, if he elected to come back before us with a PRD rezone and move forward with the plat as shown?
There's not a burden, not a hardship. I think...
So where is the position of the variance regarding that issue?
I think in your Code 94-66-2, it states that variances are encouraged for private open space or similar buffers. I think this application in front of you has about fifty-seven and a half percent of open space. That's over half the development is in buffers, and I think that is keeping with the spirit and the intent of the Moll Mel Code to have a lot of open space.
But there's also a vehicle to get your client where he desires to go by rezoning the property?
Yes. There's two vehicles or two routes that we could go.
So we wouldn't be denying your client the opportunity to develop the property if we denied the variance this evening. He would have the option to either come back before us as a PRD development, if he so chooses, or to build at sixteen-fifty in accordance with the R1 requirements?
Yes.
No further questions?
Yes. Any other Commissioner questions? I have a couple of questions, a couple of statements. Statement first. I've talked around to different people in the building industry, and I've talked to neighbors that own property across the street from this development, and this is something new. The large amount of green space that goes along with this, if you remember when we went through that little process and we got the long-range plan that's been sitting on the shelf, one of the things that they wanted to do was to increase park space, and even though this will be private property over there, I'm pretty sure if the neighbors across the street wanted to walk down through these walking paths through the woods, they wouldn't be evicted. It's... I know, I'm over sixty years old, and I live on a corner lot in a PRD subdivision, and by the time I get through more in my yard, tired. I sometimes wish I had less yard in the same-sized house. Of course, I'd have to have the same-sized house or a new wife, so it's one of those. But the people that I've talked to, they're not afraid of this. The large amount of green space that's allowed behind it, the only issue I have with that is accessibility, and they've already said they're going to do paths, and I assume that the pathways are probably going to be where you're going to be moving material from one part of the site to the other. Am I guessing that, or...
Yes, and there's also some logging roads that are through the development that they created when they logged it years ago. He would like to use those logging roads to also turn those into the walking path, because I mean, there's pretty much a road bed or a walking trail right there already, so it would be a mix of the two.
Yeah. The couple of things that I had issue with was with a lot this size and a house with a footprint that reached a certain percentage. What if they want an accessory building? Well, we found that in their bill of assurance, there's no accessory building allowed, but as we all know, POAs come and go. So they've agreed to put on the filed plat that the house plus any accessory structure can only be at the forty-five percent rate. So we wouldn't have a big house and a little bit lot and a big old building in the backyard, and we would have something that code enforcement could enforce. You know, somebody comes in for a permit, they pull the plat, they see that item number sixteen has that square footage requirement that they can't reach. You know, the house is forty-five percent of the lot, and they want to put a fourteen-by-sixteen accessory structure on the back, they can't get the permit to do that. Now, I can see some issue there with this lot having a two-story house and a smaller footprint for the foundation and being able to get a variance perhaps, but still the POA, if it's active, should keep that from happening. The other thing that I can see is maybe a pool. How... I'm not exactly sure about a pool, if that's considered an accessory structure.
Mr. Morley question.
But, you know, again, this is something new, and when across the street, the people... And I hadn't talked to everybody over there, but a few people, and they don't seem to have a problem with it.
Well, I don't have an issue with the development, and although I've not visited the subdivisions that Mr. Dale was providing reference, or the viable market that's available for them, I'm not arguing. I just don't care for the vehicle as clients wanting to move through. We've never approved a subdivision that I'm aware of like this under this section, so I'm not really too excited about providing the first one out of the bat with a variance.
But the way that we allow that is because of the green space. Is that correct, Mr. Neri?
Excuse me?
Because of the size of the plat or the size of the area developed. The percentage of it being undeveloped or green space allows them to do this? Is that correct?
Not exactly. There's really not a huge percentage of green space called out that the applicant proposes. In this case, it's fifty-seven and a half percent, I think, of the entirety of the development. This is still R1 zoning, so you're still talking about a percentage of a maximum of around fourteen percent. They're offering this green space of their own volition through their own design. They're not required to do that.
Okay.
There's not a... Excuse me. I'll ask Mr. Neri a question. So there's not a restriction or a burden that we're placing on the client regarding the open space requirement for R1?
No. As far as the applicant made this decision to show this much green space on the plat, they did not have to. They didn't have to get close to that. As a matter of fact, Mr. Dale and I discussed a note that's on the plat that you and I went over today, which is actually incorrect and will be removed. That's a snapshot from a New Bedford development plat. So, yeah, the actual requirement is around ten to fourteen percent, not fifty percent.
So, you know, I don't think the issue just, for me, is not the development, and I think that it would work. I just think PRD is the right mechanism to move that through with, rather than a variance through R1. And I asked Mr. Dale the questions earlier. The only thing that I'm getting in response with that is time, and I don't understand why that's critical. I know that PRD does open his client up to perhaps a little bit more scrutiny through the review process than what R1 does, but it's still... We still have a vehicle in our code that permits this development to go forward, and he's exercising not to do that rather than just having a variance in R1. And, you know, for me personally, I would rather see him move it through PRD without a variance.
Is the end result not the same development, the same product?
Yeah, but it's in accordance with the way that we do business. Well, it's somewhat, somewhat. I mean, right now, we would approve it. It would give, the way that the ordinance is set up, it would provide the opportunity for you to construct... Well, the footprint is bigger. I guess you could build a, if you want to go two-story, you could have more than nineteen-hundred square feet, or if you want to go seventeen-fifty, you know, you could go two-story on the whole development, do some split level or whatever the case is. So it's pretty hilly. I guess that's yet to be determined.
But with the PRD, we may or may not get this offer of this large greenbelt area.
Well, if it's PRD, we could require it.
Yes, but the percentage wouldn't be fifty-seven?
In this case, they're offering at fifty-seven. The percentage in PRD is about the same.
The same?
About the same, yeah. The advantage of PRD is there's no minimum or maximums in setback height, that type of thing. Usually somewhat conducive to topography such as this, Majestic Point, others.
If he came back with PR... And of course, his client unfortunately is not here tonight, but if he comes back and we say, well, you know, or my preference, I can't speak for the preference of the rest of the Commissioners, is for it to move our PRD, it opens up perhaps additional things that he would want to consider. Maybe he would want to bump the side lot lines back, or the rear line, or the front line or the rear line. He would have that flexibility. Right now, he does not. So that's all, it has to come back via variance.
I did ask you all to read some certain sections of code that earlier Mr. Dale quoted and fairly correctly. I'm going to re-quote it and read it for you. He said 94-66, which is functions, and that is under the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We all know that one of the first things that you all look for is the Board of Zoning Adjustment, or just the Planning Commission on a variance request, is a hardship. That is true. Here, request for variances from the literal provisions of this chapter in instances where strict enforcement of this chapter would cause undue hardship due to circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration, or, or, where unique mitigating circumstances exist in the immediate area such as public or private open space or similar buffers.
I just don't think we're there. Or me personally.
Well, there was a late arrival into the meeting. I believe one of the owners is here. Sir, do you wish to speak?
No, I'm just listening. I understand what he's saying. It's just...
If you will come to the... If you don't mind, give us your...
We're asking for the same thing later. It's just, we're just trying to get it done now, that's all.
If you will, for the record, could you give us your name and address?
Yeah. We were just asking for the same thing.
Yes, sir.
As you're saying, I understand your rules. Eric Ward, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
What's your address?
My address? 68 De Ville Circle, Little Rock?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Again, if you want to plead your case, now's the time.
Well, again, we can do it the way he's asking. We were just trying to get it done now and get it over with, but I mean, we can wait, if that's what you want to do. Don't mind at all.
Doesn't matter what I want to do. It's what the Commission decides to do.
Okay, whatever y'all decide to do then.
Well, really, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, there's probably three choices here as I see it. You can grant the variance. If you don't grant the variance, they could either redesign this some way, or come back and ask for a PRD rezoning, or I guess they could decide this evening to meet the forty percent requirement and build smaller homes.
You could move through with this approved plat, and it's approved, and then you would have a decision to make whether you want to move forward with the approved plat, should the variance not go through, so make sure you understand. So you could move forward with it as proposed, but just with the forty percent and all the R1 requirements that come with that.
Correct. I understand it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any questions?
No other questions for the applicant? Anybody from the audience? Go ahead, Brian.
If I heard correctly, and maybe I misunderstood, but the R1 is more restrictive with the setbacks in the design codes than a PRD. So a PRD is more flexible.
Yes.
Would the Commission not want a more stringent and restrictive design or development with the R1, knowing exactly what it is, than granting more freedom with the PRD?
The PRD would just be a request, so if it's, if you move forward and you want a request from the side back, it has to come before the Commission. It comes as a group. So it's not necessarily granted.
And they would move on to the City Council for final approval.
And read three times, or resolution?
No. Read three times for a rezoning, if it passed, and the development plan came back, it would move on from you all to be read once by resolution by the Council.
I guess just the point of it is, there's reasons why we have these zoning and these different vehicles for getting a plat through. And that's the hardship, proving the hardship and asking for the variance. We don't want to set a precedence that anybody can just come up and ask, and then it gets a little gray and fuzzy. And we understand the time. I mean, time is money, and we want to... And I mean, I think this is a good subdivision, and I think people will want this, and I think you're going to sell out fairly quick on this. So I don't think that's a problem, and I don't think he's saying we don't want this. I think we just, we have a book that's been put together, and we try to follow that. And that's where I see it coming from.
So we have a hardship or the large buffers. That was how the code read, 94-66-2. It said or, right? Hardship or...
Or they could take that into consideration as well. It doesn't say that they definitely have to grant the variance because it puts in a couple of blurbs about open space and buffers. It just says it's something to consider.
I have a question of Mr. City Attorney.
Uh-oh.
On variances and granting them. If someone else was to come in with a variance, it would have to be very, very, very similar to this in order for them to use this as so-like, you know, in a sense that, well, you granted this guy a variance for these circumstances. This other variance, I think you should grant that for us because we have similar circumstances or some hardships.
I think that's up to the Commission to decide just where they're going to distinguish between two different requests, and what elements are in each of the both of them that the Commission finds important enough to either treat them both the same or to treat them differently. To answer your question, maybe a little more specifically, the Planning Commission could determine that the request has to be exactly the same with the same topography and surrounding neighborhoods and exact square footage, or you all could take a more lenient route to it and say, just look at the percentage of green space.
When I read the, when I read this with Mr. Neri earlier today, it says, where unique mitigating circumstances exist in the immediate area such as public or private open space or similar buffers. I'm interpreting that as adjacent ownership, not the applicant's ownership, is that you're not impending upon the rights of someone else. Now, you could interpret it, I guess, the way Mr. Dale's interpreting it too as well, where he's looking at that, well, you're getting more and we're providing it, and I read that ordinance, and I don't, I don't look at it that way. I look at it as you're impending on the rights of others.
Well, and I'm looking at it in the sense that we went through this strategic plan, and one of the things that came up was that we need to get with the developers and get more green space in the city.
Absolutely. That's a great, that's a great idea. We have a vehicle to do that. Let's do it in accordance with that way.
With the PRD.
Okay.
And not necessarily that way. It doesn't have to be that way. If you adhere to the forty percent...
Percent than this.
That's right.
Same thing.
Still think the same, yeah, same objectives met, either way. But if he wants to do something outside of that, we have a way to do that.
Okay. Any other questions of Commissioners for Staff or Applicant? With that, I'd like to consider a motion, and remember, a City Attorney always tells us to make motions in the positive. They're easier to figure out.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, because I can't do it.
Yes, we have to make this in the affirmative, so I'd make a motion that we approve the request for variance regarding Section 94-166 for yard and area requirements, subsection 2F, Moll Mel Ridge 223 LLC, applicant, pending any other Commissioner comments or public comments.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
And this is at the forty-five percent?
You're voting on allowing them to forty-five percent coverage. That's correct.
Actually, can I... It's, are we bound by the wording on the agenda? Because the wording on the agenda just says more than forty percent.
I'd like to amend my motion, if you would. In accordance with the maximum percent of building coverage not to exceed forty-five percent.
Thank you. The second...
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Okay. All right. And with that, all those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no?
No.
Motion fails.
What would you like to do for the rest of your items, Mr. Dale?
We would like to amend our application for the preliminary plat to take number note sixteen, general note sixteen, and reduce that to forty percent, please.
Are you removing note 23 as well? That was mentioned earlier.
Yes.
We've discussed that. That'll be removed.
Okay. I've never done this before. Can we do this on the fly?
You're just amending his application if you'll accept it.
And forty percent?
Excuse me. Do we have to reconvene the Planning Commission?
Yes.
I think we do.
We do.
With that, I'd like to reconvene the Planning Commission. Thank you.
He's, you're asking for an amendment to your application, correct?
Yes, to amendments, to strike number 23 under general notes, and to change note sixteen to forty percent.
That's certainly been done before.
Sure. Does that need to be approved, Commissioner, Attorney?
Well, we're not, we're not...
No, no, no. Does it need, do we need a motion to, do we need a motion to accept that amendment, or the applicant do it without a formal...
Well, that would be in the motion when we make it, if, yeah.
I agree. I think the, when y'all approve, it'd be a motion to approve as modified by the applicant.
Okay, well, and that's not all. On note sixteen, maximum percent of building coverage not to exceed now forty percent, including accessory structures.
Also, from the plat that, I mean, the preliminary plat that we've got, I think up there, if you'll notice, on Ridgeview Garden Lane, they've added a sidewalk.
That's correct.
We haven't got anything from the Zon, so I'm going to put you on the spot. I don't think he's got your calculations yet for detention and... I don't think he's got your calculations yet for detention and all that. Are you agreeable to do what the city engineer says in the construction phase of your project?
Yes, the regional stormwater detention facility is under construction right now, so there's a large facility that'll handle this development. And then the drainage calculations, we've seen him a preliminary plat showing some preliminary flows that we'll work out the drainage calculations for the subdivision with him at the time we do the construction drawings.
So, basically, yes, you're agreeing with the city engineer's comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And...
I've got a question about, like, lots twenty-nine, thirty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-eight, forty-eight, and thirty-nine. Should those corners be true offsets and radial, the building setback line? Yes. For R1, yes.
Twenty-nine, thirty-eight.
The corner lots.
Yes.
The offset requirement wouldn't be met the way that's drawn. The side, the side or front yard wouldn't be met the way that's drawn.
So, the building lines would be curved?
Yes. There'd be a true fifteen-foot offset.
Yes.
They're curved on seven, eight, twenty, and twenty-one.
And is somebody writing this down for perhaps a motion later?
Yeah, he can...
Yes.
Forty-nine, forty... He said the lots that were affected.
And then one other item, I see that fire chief, did he have a letter in here also?
Yep.
And you're agreeable with meeting his request?
Yeah, we've already agreed with that.
I would make mention of something else, and I think most of us have discussed it. It was brought up, perhaps someone might want an accessory structure after all, and all these folks would have to come before you, one at a time, asking for a variance. That's actually controlled two places now, with the additional plat note on number sixteen. I have a sample bill of assurance, it's also controlled in there, where it will say something like this. No building shall be erected, altered, placed, or allowed to remain on any lot other than one detached, single-family dwelling, not to exceed two stories in height, including the basement area. It also goes further, and when you get into architectural control, of course, the applicants will differ a little bit from this, but it'll be similar in wording. Each dwelling must be at least, in this case, twelve hundred square feet for one-level dwelling, at least fifteen hundred square feet for a two-level dwelling. So, it's also controlled there, just for your edification. And as far as staff comments on this plat, other than satisfying the city engineer, and all of your comments this evening, many of which Mr. Dale had already satisfied, and pending any further comments, staff would recommend for a contingent approval as this plat has been somewhat amended this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any commissioners have any questions of applicant? Anyone in the audience? If not, I'll entertain a somewhat complicated motion.
Roy. I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the gardens of Ridgeview Trails, Moll Mill Ridge, two-two-three LLC, with all staff comments, and all commissioner comments, and the engineer's comments from tonight.
And can you bring out some individual lots?
Amending note sixteen, changing from forty-five percent to forty percent, and adding, including accessory structures, and removing note twenty-three.
And then changing specific lots?
Lot twenty-nine, thirty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-eight. Did I miss anything?
No.
Have a second?
Second.
Two of them. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Next item on the agenda is preliminary development plan for track four, Osborne addition. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the only two commissioners that are presently on the Planning Commission when the Osborne addition first came was Acting Chairman Todd and Chairman Fisher. This is approximately twelve years ago, I think, and you all know where this is. It's off of, off the Boulevard on Olympia Drive. This was an idea of what was called a triumvirate of care. A skilled nursing facility, an assisted living facility, and then there was always plans for an independent living facility, which is what they've come with this evening, represented by the Holloway Group. Within your packets, you have an email from Mr. Ramon, preliminarily blessing the detention calculations. I also have a late email from John Payne about some things that he wanted done. Jim, the resubmitted Osborne track plans dealing with the fire department issues, additional hydrants from the Holloway Group are approved. And staff had very few comments. Those were two to actually meet, as well as any city engineer requirements. Any of your comments this evening, staff is going to recommend for a do-pass recommendation to the Moll Mill City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any commissioners have any questions of staff on this item? Is there anyone in the audience representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening. My name is Mark Bixler, thirty-one ninety-three, MC eighteen, in Texarkana, Arkansas. I am here, I am the project architect on the project. I would like to give just a brief discussion. I think Mr. Neri did a, did a good job of explaining what we are doing currently. The, well, first off, this whole development was designed and thought about in terms of continuum of care, and the two elements that are there right now, the skilled nursing facility, the assisted living, are the first two pieces of this. The independent living is the third aspect of this. Basically, it is senior apartment-type living, but it is specifically structured for the folks that have gotten to the point in their life. As you mentioned, where taking care of a yard is a burden, more than a joy. So, this is a living community that offers the opportunity for the people that come and live here to live without the ingredients, the niceties, if you will, of actually taking care of your work, doing maintenance in any kind of physical plant. We give them two different types of options. One are kind of bungalow units, where you actually have more of a private-type residence with a neighbor next to a firewall. You will have a private garage that is a very small percentage of it. Primarily, it is a three-story structure where people will have the opportunity. Most of these people will be very mobile. They will have their own vehicles and be coming and going in the community like most people, but they just don't have to do any maintenance. They don't have to cook. Independent food service is a part of this, with the commercial kitchen, commercial dining. So, they are going to be given three meals a day. It's their opportunity to participate, or they have the opportunity, in a very small kitchenette, to, to do a few things, or go out to local restaurants. So, that's just kind of a synopsis of what we're doing, and I'd open up for any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of commissioners for the applicant? Uh, I've got two. You are in total agreement that you will meet all the Fire Marshal's recommendations?
Absolutely.
They already have.
And on top of that, the, the city engineer, you meet all of his requirements also?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the first part.
This is a recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Neri.
Motion to make recommendation to city council for the preliminary development plan for track four of the Osborne addition. Osborne Development LP is the applicant, pending any other commissioner or public comment.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes? Yes. Any opposed say no? Okay, first item passed is landscape plan. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff would recommend for approval as resubmitted. This does not move to the city council. It stays with the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any commissioners have any questions of staff or the applicant on the landscape plan? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the landscape plan for track four, Osborne addition, pending all other comments.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor say yes? Yes. Any opposed say no? Okay, next thing we have is the commercial building design. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff would recommend for approval as resubmitted. This also stays with the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any commissioner questions of staff or the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the commercial building design, track four, Osborne addition, pending all other comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes? Yes. Any opposed say no? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your consideration.
With that, I'd like to close public hearing, and the next item on the agenda is a liaison report. Commissioner Ramsey had September the sixth...
Okay. The only thing that really was, is, they discussed Joshua, city clerk's position, and we'll reappoint him in the first meeting in October, and everything else was on the third reading.
Okay. I had September nineteenth, and we had the second reading of ordinance nine-eleven, amending the Moll Mill land use map, and the second reading of nine-twelve, the zoning map, and that was for Ridgeview. And let me think. I think basically that was it. Oh, we do have a new finance director. She hasn't quit yet, has she, Mayor?
She hasn't showed up.
When did she start?
October third.
Very good, very good.
Okay, and that was all I had on, on that. See, we have October the third, Commissioner Johnson, and October the seventeenth, Commissioner Green. Any commissioners have anything for the commission before we adjourn? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say yes? Yes. Any opposed say no? We are adjourned.
Someone can either make a motion, or they can move. Fun.
Do what? Give me one more for the...
I'm all out.
Oh, man.
One can either make a motion, like, I make a motion that we, or I move we. Yeah. So, if there's ever a, like, a court reporter typing every word, you might save carpal tunnel for fifteen minutes.